How's that Frosty Boy?
Hey Commissioner Robin says, do you got your shorts on today?
Uh, no, my jeans and my shirt's not tucked in. And no coat, no coat today.
No coat, got ya.
No, no. I got me a spotlight too, trying to get myself better lighting, see that?
Oh, I thought you were trying to tan.
Well, I was gonna shave my head bald, but then getting around today, I've had quite the day, so, yeah.
Yeah, you been saying that for months.
I know. This is better lighting than what you said on here though, it's good.
Looking good, I mean, you know, you could use a little more tan, but.
Yeah, and you got a fresh, you cut your hair today freshly.
Yeah, yeah, it's a meeting day, Al, trim the beard off.
Where's Tamara's at, in LA or what?
I don't know if you realize this, but there's a couple, there's, there's like forty or fifty people that log into this.
Yeah.
You gotta, you gotta look good.
Yeah.
Alan, that is, um, Jerusalem, Israel. That was the view from my, um, window in my dorm room when I was there and I got to take pictures all different times of the, the day, but, um, yep, that was looking out over the city of Jerusalem.
That's an actual photo, nice.
Yeah, I was there my last semester of law school, I did a conflict resolution, uh, study abroad program in Jerusalem.
Very nice, hey Robin.
He said, hi Robin. And they have Frosty Boy in Jerusalem, me and Robin just went.
Oh, how was the line? Was it a line?
It was bad and there's little ice cream cones on the ground, so you can stand six feet apart.
Alright. Run alright. I'm gonna get my dog out of here, please, before it burps and, be right back.
Hello Mayor.
Hello, sorry, I was on mute, I didn't realize it.
Hi Angie.
Hi Robin, long lost friend.
I know, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. I know, cuz mine's turned up.
Hi Angie.
Oh, happy birthday. Nice, nice Tamara's, nice background.
Thank you. No, I got it, I put mine on mute. See. No.
What did you guys get from Frosty Boy?
I was just told, Robin, that I got a cherry glacier with orange sherbet in it and it tastes like rainbow sherbet. Hi Lynn.
You're muted lad.
Good evening.
Hi Lad.
Well.
How's my light lad, I got me, I brought me some.
Very good, very good.
This is my son's room, I just tried, I'm gonna try to get some better lighting this week, you know.
Shows.
Thanks man.
Mr. Taylor?
Donald?
You're muted Don.
Hey Nathan.
Mayor, at six o'clock, I can do a little introductory thing if that's okay with you.
That's fine.
So I had my audio off and so I did say hello to all the commissioners, city administrators, city clerks. And I guess that's it, and city attorney.
Hello.
Mrs. Taylor is going to join us, but she's pulling some weeds in her flower bed, so.
I like the new look you've got going on, Mr. Taylor.
Oh, this is my, this is my mask.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's a little, little facial hair.
Don Taylor, do you remember Romper Room? I feel like that's what I'm doing.
Pardon me, do I remember who?
Do you remember the TV show Romper Room for little kids? And that the lady would say, I see my friend Alan and Lad and Gordon and Angie. Who else do I see today?
Where is Big Bird, huh? Different show.
Lad, my bird feeder has had a lot of different birds lately.
Well, you must be putting some good food in there then.
Yeah, I, I have a bluebird now, which is pretty, I've never had that, I have a bench coming around a lot. But I'm getting a lot of variety, quite a few.
Bluebirds are kind of bullies. They'll, they'll scare the others away, but they're nice birds. I've been putting up bird feeders in my neighbor's yard. That way I can see them and my dogs can get to the birds.
There you go.
Are we ready to get started?
Yep, we can go.
Hey, hello everyone, welcome to our first virtual pre-meeting. Um, City Administrator Nathan Bird and I wanted to address just a couple of things before we get started tonight. A pre-meeting is a forum for discussion among the commissioners, but there are no votes taken this meeting, it's a little bit more informal than what you'll see at seven o'clock. Um, upon inclusion of commission discussion, an opportunity for public comment will be provided and guests will be unmuted at that time if they would like to speak. I also want to point out that closed captioning is available, um, at the bottom of your screen, you can click on that if you need to see it. Uh, we don't know how long this meeting will last, I'm notoriously bad at predicting how long a pre-meeting will last, and so I wanted to point out that if this ends well before a regular meeting at seven o'clock, but you want to attend the seven o'clock meeting, you can leave this meeting and then reconnect via the same link that you used to get here before. Uh, one link is gonna work for both meetings, so you're also welcome to stay on the line, stay on the meeting, stay on the call, um, if you like, uh, but the same link will work, uh, for seven o'clock that you used to get into this meeting tonight. So, Mayor, if you wanna call the roll, I'll jump back to agenda item number one.
Alright, I call the meeting, the pre-meeting to order. Roll call please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Hope. Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Watson.
Present.
Commissioner Strayer.
Present.
Commissioner Gows.
Present.
All commission members present.
Alright, item one, and our really only published agenda item tonight is the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget discussion. Um, as you all know, commissioners, this is up for adoption during the regular meeting tonight, and so I wanted to give just a quick overview of where we're at with the budget, some conversations that we've had since our last meeting, and also explain a couple of changes that are reflected in the draft that you received last week. If, if you want to interrupt me at any point, please do, I'll probably speak for a couple of minutes, but please interrupt me if there are questions or comments. Uh, since our last meeting, we've reduced general fund spending by an additional one hundred and four thousand two hundred dollars. Uh, there's no marquee cut there, these are really the culmination of a lot of smaller reductions, department by department, things like, uh, reduce staff training, reduce transportation to staff training, additional productions and things like marketing, uh, for next year. Uh, we also found a mower that survived the first round of cuts that wasn't supposed to be there, so we're gonna delay that expenditure as well. And so when you add it all up, uh, we removed a hundred and four thousand two hundred dollars out of the general fund. And so, our new total estimated expenditures for the full budget is thirty-two million six, three six thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. And the new total general fund expenditures for the general fund is eleven million eight hundred and two thousand, uh, one hundred and three dollars. And that, that is all reflected in, uh, tonight's resolution and the budget that you received, uh, last week. It's also on our website for anybody who'd like to look through it, not necessarily an easy thing to look at, but it's, uh, the spreadsheet is there. Um, as we had talked about, uh, numerous times in the past, uh, we know this budget's gonna require more work. Um, we are required by charter, uh, to adopt the budget now, either this week or next week. Um, but we expect amendments to be necessary once we know more about the financial impact of COVID nineteen. Uh, Nathan Owen and I participated in our second webinar today with, uh, officials from the Department of Treasury. Uh, I'll mention that a little bit, some things that we learned, um, but let's just say things are still very much uncertain. Uh, so I want to talk about a couple areas, a couple major revenue sources where we have some uncertainty right now. And one of those is transportation funding, if you look at this draft of the budget, um, we have about two million dollars worth of road improvement projects, uh, in the budget. As you all knew already, we have, uh, delayed one project, uh, already at this time. It remains on the books in case we decide to do it, but it's really important that everybody understand that the street projects in the budget should all have a big asterisk next to them. If the funding doesn't develop, we will not be moving forward on those, and the commission, of course, will be involved, uh, in authorizing any project that we do. Uh, we believe the gas tax revenue will absolutely be impacted, uh, by the situation right now, we just don't know the full extent of that impact just yet. Um, but this is a major revenue source, uh, it is a source of revenue also though, that can only be used on certain projects. We can't divert these funds into the general fund or divert them to other projects, um, it has to be used on road related items. And so, um, we get these revenues monthly, which is good, because we're able to keep track of things uh, more in real time than we are with some other revenue sources, and so, um, we will be watching these receipts the next couple of months to see what kind of trends are emerging. We did get some information from the state, uh, late on Thursday, an email went out to all the cities, uh, with a revised estimate for transportation funding. We were a little surprised to receive that, because we didn't think that anything like that was in the works quite yet. Um, and for us, uh, it was actually good news, it was pretty much funded at the full amount, related inspection, which did say took into account our present situation with COVID nineteen. Uh, but those estimates prompted a lot of discussion around the state with city managers, some saw a large increase in the amount of funding they were expecting, uh, some saw nominal decreases, some stayed the same. And so after our webinar today, I think that we're going to, uh, maybe wait a little bit longer before we have a real a comfort level with what that funding's going to be, but again, this is one area where if it doesn't develop, we just don't do the projects, and so, uh, we'd like to keep to our five-year plan as much as possible, Matt's done a great job in engineering, putting that together, we wanna be aggressive on that if we can, but we're acknowledging that there's two million dollars in the budget that we may not, uh, have a matching revenue source for. And so, we're gonna see where we are with that, um, and hopefully things will develop in a positive way on the gasoline taxes. Uh, the second main item that I want to talk about is the constitutional shared revenue that we get from the state. Um, that's another major funding source for us, uh, this is, uh, largely sales taxes that get collected and then distributed out to the cities. Uh, these payments are received every other month, so gas tax receipts come in monthly, these receipts come in every other month. Um, the state is currently projecting for the city of Adrian, one million nine hundred and twenty-six thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars in constitutional revenue sharing. Uh, the budget that's in front of you now reduces that, but down to one million seven hundred ninety-five thousand eight hundred dollars. Um, it's likely that more reductions will be necessary, uh, we, we don't know exactly what that revenue stream's gonna look like, and we have not received any update at all, uh, on this particular line item in the budget. If the state does provide us with an updated projection, we will amend the budget around that projection. Uh, if they do not, then our options are to see how the next two payments come in. Again, see what trends are, are, are moving in, uh, in budget appropriately. And so, uh, there's a lot of uncertainty here, I mentioned earlier that we had, we've now had two statewide webinars with Treasury officials. Um, pretty much the same story both times, uh, lots of words like uncertain, uh, moving target, don't know, still looking into it. Um, and so nobody is really in a, in a great position right now to feel certain about what's gonna happen in the next fourteen, fifteen months. Uh, one of the challenges that we have, again, is that our budget starts in July, we're required to adopt it now. Uh, but we're not in that unusual of a situation, there are cities all, all over the state that are dealing with this exact same situation and they're doing similar to what we're doing, they're adopting something that they know they're gonna be changing down the road. And so, um, we did learn from the state that they're gonna have a revenue, uh, forecasting conference on May fifteenth. Um, they did not, they weren't, they weren't able to assure that we would get our projections, uh, immediately thereafter, but they did schedule a follow-up conversation with us for May eighteenth, and so we're hoping around that time that we have numbers from the state that we feel comfortable with to put into this budget, and, and again, adjust accordingly. Um, but there's no guarantee of that, because there was also, um, a lot of talking about how it may involve legislative activity. Um, it may involve, uh, compromises, it may involve legislation from the state, and so we just don't know exactly what we're gonna be getting, and so our fallback option is to look at the receipts as they come in and just re-budget based on the trends that are emerging. So, those are the two big areas of, uh, of budget revenue uncertainty that I wanted to review today. Um, I feel comfortable with this as a starting point for the budget, it certainly allows us to satisfy our charter requirement, adopt the budget for the next fiscal year. Um, but again, just wanna stress again, over and over, uh, we're gonna be back in front of you with an amended budget as soon as we have more information. So, uh, that's all I had, uh, I think Nathan Owen is also on the line, and so either one of us would be happy to have more discussion, more conversation, any questions you have as well.
Uh, one of the Naitons, um, the, you just mentioned, Nathan Bird, you just mentioned a, um, a revenue conference or, or something along those lines. What parties are at that, what's, what's made of that, is that a normal procedure, is that something for extraordinary times? Can you go into that a little bit more as to, you know, how reasonable it is that we have an answer within two weeks? Um, and then my second question is, is, um, along the lines of, uh, the, the payments, like, do they normally trend? I, I, and I know it was in, um, our notes and I don't have it in front of us right now, but is, are, are they smooth through the year? Or are there, there dips on the quarters, or, or how do, how do the, the payments usually come in from the state?
Yeah, on the first question regarding the, the conference, my understanding is that this is what they do every year when they help us project uh, what the revenue's going to be, I mean, we, we get numbers from them every year from meetings like what they're gonna have on the fifteenth, and that's what we're encouraged to use for our budget. The reason this is so challenging is that nobody's ever been through a situation like this before, especially right as budgets were being put together. And so I, I, I believe that this is not a normal time they would be doing this, maybe they would have done it earlier and they'd feel confident in their projections, we'd go forward, and so, I believe this is a special meeting they're having, uh, to, to take into consideration the situation that we're dealing with right now. But something like this does happen, and it's, it's the group that basically looks at the sales tax and, and then projects out what it should be city by city based on the formula that's in the constitution. So, um, I don't know that they normally would do it this time of year, but they do something like this, uh, often, so that we can, can plan. Uh, you asked about the payments and how they, how they look typically. One of the things that's been so, so difficult for me, uh, right now is just remembering how good of a position we were in, I don't know, March twelfth or so. We were in a really good position about March twelfth, and then it all changed seemingly overnight, and I point that out because, um, and I'm trying to find it here in my packet, give me just a second. Uh, we were, all but one of our payments for this present fiscal year that we're in, came in above estimates. And so it's not necessarily a set amount that you get every two months, it does vary. And we were doing really well, they were coming in higher, I, I think it was four out of five last payments came in higher than what we had planned. And so that was a really good thing, and that also helps, uh, you know, this fiscal year, because the truth of the matter is that the worst of this, I hope, is gonna affect us this fiscal year. We get a payment in June, and that payment in June is gonna reflect sales tax receipts that were taken in March and April. So that's the, at least I hope, those will be the worst months in terms of, of revenue. And so, um, we have actually planned for this June for that payment to be fifty percent of what it normally is, that's a huge draft, a huge drop. Um, and it may not be that bad, hopefully it's not, but if it is, we can withstand that, partially because previous payments had come in above estimates, and we had some other areas where we hadn't spent, uh, what was available to us for the budget. Um, and so, yeah, they, they come in, uh, every two months on the constitutional side, but the number does vary, depends on what, it's, it's real world activity, it's what happens out there, and, and that's how the formula gets determined. Yeah, I don't know if that answered what you were asking, but.
It does, and I found the page, I couldn't find the page in our packet, and, and the, the CVT R S is the smooth one, and then, um, the other one is the one that varies, and that, that, I, I found it after I, I asked the question, so, and it did, I mean, your estimates in here do reflect, I mean, a hundred and thirty-four for the June payment, do you know the April payment, that's not reflected on this worksheet? And I can't remember reading it in this packet, did we receive that, how much was that, was it like on target?
Nathan Owen, do you have that number handy?
I, I don't have the number in front of me, but that just came in at the end of last week, and it was actually a little bit above what we have on there as budgeted, so.
Yeah, so that would have been for January and February, back when things were really humming along, and so again, that's gonna be another helpful payment, payment for us, one more good one before we hit what is likely to be the worst one. Um, okay, let's, let's talk a little bit about CVT R S funding, I didn't really mention that as one of my, one of my revenue sources, uh, but it is another area that, that could be subject to change. Um, the state projected for us five hundred and twelve thousand dollars, and this is just a revenue sharing program that they have uh, for cities, villages and townships, and so they told us to, or they, they estimated for us five hundred and twelve thousand. We put that in as five hundred thousand, we really never put the full amount in, we always scale back a little bit, because we, we never know if there'll be some fluctuation. We were told on the first webinar with Treasury that we should, uh, somewhat rely on that funding being available, um, right now, this is in the current state fiscal year budget, uh, to be appropriated to us. But we were also told that the legislature could, uh, take a vote to change it. And so, um, that's, that's also another unknown, um, it's not something that could be done administratively by somebody at the state, it's not something that's dictated by a, a formula that reflects what's happening out in the world, it's just a, it's a number that they've budgeted for us, uh, for, for our next fiscal budget. And so, if we get a, uh, let's say we get a revenue estimate that takes that five hundred thousand down to zero, then we'll have more, a lot more work we have to do, that would be a pretty sizable. That would be a pretty sizable hit as well. Our focus has been on the larger sources, the, you know, two plus million for transportation, nearly 2 million for sales tax. But this half a million dollars is also going to become important if the state decides that this is something they need to cut to help balance their, their budget deficit. So right now it's in their budget. It's planned to happen. There's been no changes to it. But again, it's one of those areas where they could change. And so we have to keep our eyes open for that as well. But we're hopeful to have an idea of that sometime in the next few weeks as well. Because those projections should be updated with, with all the other projections. And if there's legislative talk of changing it, we may know at that time what to plan for.
I think Nathan, you know, when we talk about the gas tax, I can kind of give some insight on this. The month of March, for me, we were down about 60% gallon sold for this time of the year. So that's just one little station that has four pumps. So I think that you cutting that number in half, I think is important because it's going to impact. You know, you know, if even now, I think, you know, as things slowly start to open up, I think that, you know, identifying those checks and seeing, and seeing the trend of them and making decisions as we go forward, I think is very prudent of us. But I would anticipate a drastic cut in the gas revenue sharing that comes to, you know.
Yeah, I think that it will be substantial, especially for this month and maybe the next two or three. You would think that as things reopen, that may pick up a little bit. But you mentioned two minutes ago that I hated the fact that I was going to have to say, I don't know as much as I have to say it. But that's just another area that we just don't know the extent of the, of the impact yet. But I appreciate you sharing your expertise on that. That number scares me, but, but it's probably reflective of what's happening right now. One other thing I wanted to mention on the budget in terms of our revenue projected, we, we put zero in for our sale of property. We have every intent in selling some property this year. We, we've been in talks with a few buyers and some projects that you're all aware of. And in particular, that I hope will still be able to move forward. But in this current fiscal year, we sold about $240,000 worth of city-owned property. And we've been very conservative to not assume any sale of property this year. But I do think that that's an area where we may see some revenue come in. It is not going to be reflected in this budget draft. And again, that's just to try to be cautious with, with what's going on. But there are a few areas where I think we'll see some revenue that we maybe haven't accounted for quite yet. And that's.
Nathan, has Chief Eric Massengill said anything about the ambulance service and how their revenue has been impacted? Because we've been relying on that to cover the cost of the ambulance and the additional staff.
Yeah, that's a good question. I can actually, maybe prior to the next meeting, I think Eric will have an updated report for you on what's happening right now. He did mention that it had been down a little bit until this weekend. Things picked back up, more people out and about, just see more activity all around. Obviously, the ambulance is not in this budget. It out, as with most of our capital purchases, that would be about a $70,000 lease is what we were looking at annually. And like I said, on March 12th, that sounded all right to us. It doesn't sound so good right now. And so this is an area where we're going to have to take a look at. We, I know the need for the ambulance has been well documented by Eric and by others. And it is something that we'd like to be able to address, but we feel like right now we're going to have to plan to get through the next fiscal year without it. Unless something comes, comes forward that we just can't ignore. But our hope is to get through this fiscal year without it and it is not in the budget.
Right. Okay. Thanks.
Anything else on the budget?
What are the projected revenues for water? Are those going to go down? And then also in regards to the pension deficit, what do you see happening on your webinars with pension deficit?
Mayor, can we have our discussion before public comment?
Yes, yes, I will open that up for public comment when we're finished.
Thank you. Just for what it's worth, I do appreciate the efforts and the logic behind our approach. I mean, this is such a weird time for us to be trying to peg a budget. It's, it's, it's impossible right now. I think this is a prudent way to go about it. And it's going to be work from all, all of us and all the leadership at City Hall to get this into constantly watch it. So we're not caught off guard or just caught in a bad situation or making a bad situation worse. So I appreciate where we are right now and how this is prepared and in the direction that you've taken this.
Thanks. Just to randomly answer some questions, if it's okay with you, Commissioner, I'd like to address a couple of the things that the caller just brought up. In the budget that you can find on our website, we do have our estimated revenues for our water and steam ones, both of them. It's actually on page eight of the, of the revenue worksheet. We're estimating slightly down from what was budgeted last year, but again, this is an area we'll keep an eye on. We've been watching this since this started. We're down a couple of percentages in terms of the amount of usage right now, nothing drastic. And we just want to see if that rebounds back to normal levels over the next few weeks and months, or if that's going to be an issue. What we would do would be similar to the transportation funding. If the revenues don't develop, then we would have to scale back on the planned projects. And as the commission understands, I believe we talked about this back in March, you're doing some projects. Now we're, we're not going to do water and power side, and that's going to enable us not to pass any sort of rate increase forward. This budget does not include any kind of increase in property taxes, trash collection, water sewer. So we're holding steady on that and the residents will see no change on that in this budget. And so those revenues are there. You can see what they're slated at this year compared to what they were slated at in past years. In terms of the pension, there is something in this budget that does relate to the pension and it's in every budget. And that is our, our annual retirement contributions that we make. We are in the fifth year of a five-year phase in of putting more into those retirement contributions. And that is to hopefully keep the pension situation healthier moving forward than it's been in the past. And so I don't, I don't know the exact number. It varies department by department, but about $70,000 or so worth of general fund expenditures are retirement contributions that are above and beyond what would have been in last year's budget. And so it's a little bit of a painful thing now, but the hope is that it's going to pay off down the road. Another thing that we look at with our pensions and commissioners are certainly aware of this, we have a new actuarial report. And I can't say that word. We have a new actuarial report that we expect to receive sometime yet this spring. I think it usually shows up in late May. And it's going to show us what our new funded ratio is, the percentage. It's going to show us what our reliability is. And it's going to be reflective of activities through December of 2019. So we'll have a little bit of a better handle on that at that time. Commissioners also, I'm sure recall that usually in June is the time of year when we decide whether or not we can make an excess cash payment towards our pension liability. Last year was $500,000. We made that payment. I believe it was two years ago. It was $750,000 that we paid towards it. This year, honestly, we don't know yet. There's that, there's that phrase again, but we have to keep track of everything. But at some point in June, probably at a pre-meeting and then at a regular meeting, we'll have a discussion point over whether or not we can make another sort of lump sum contribution to our pension. But we're doing about everything that can be done. We've increased our annual retirement contributions through the budget. We have used excess fund to put towards the pension when we begin. And we also are now, all of our new employees are on a defined contribution plan as opposed to a defined benefit plan. And so it's a marathon. It's not a sprint. It's going to have ups and downs, but we are, I think, making progress on the right track. If anybody finds $21 million, let me know. Otherwise, we have to chip away at this bit by bit. And that's what we've been doing over the last couple of years. Be okay to move on to item two, everybody?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. There's just one thing I want to mention in the other items as time permits, and it relates to tonight's public hearings. The annual process of handling delinquent invoices is never a fun thing, but it's even worse right now when we're doing it virtually. I don't think that tonight's format is very well suited to that hearing, but it's what we have to do for this evening. And so I just want to make sure the commission's aware of the process we go through for this. We're required by code to provide a list of those delinquent invoices, first meeting of April every year. You got that back in our first meeting of April. We then schedule a public hearing for anybody identified as agreed by the code. Those are people who feel like they shouldn't have to pay it or feel like there may have been a mistake. Tonight's public hearing is really for them to be heard. And so I want the commission to understand that during the hearings tonight, both Nathan Owen and I will be taking notes on who's speaking on the invoice itself that they're referencing. And then what happens is between now and the next meeting, we'll get together as staff and we will look at every appeal and we'll see if there was some, something valid there. If we made a mistake, if something was billed incorrectly, we will correct that role that goes to you. And then you will be asked to vote on that at the May 18th meeting. And so I just wanted to go over again what that process is. We have had an awful lot of people contact us. We got a little bit of a head start on it this year because the mail has been delayed and we're doing everything virtually. And so we, we put an extra two weeks in this process that we normally wouldn't have had, and that's been helpful for us. It's allowed people to call us, email us. And so we have quite a few appeals in hand that are already on the list for research. But I do expect that we'll get more tonight. You're not asked to do anything tonight. There's no vote on anything this evening. Tonight's just a chance for people to be heard. And so we'll be taking notes. And at the next meeting on May 18th, we will have a revised rule that will include any, any amendments that we found to be necessary. And you'll be asked to vote on that at that time. And then anybody who remains on the roll at that point, those charges would be added to their next property tax bill that would go out in July. We have had quite a few people, as is the case, who have paid. They didn't know about the invoice. They, they were aware of it and paid. And so not a fun process. It's kind of a difficult thing that we have to do every year, but I just wanted to give you a heads up on where we're at with that and what happened as we leave tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Nathan, in regards to those, and I know you and I have had a quick conversation about this, but have there been any residents or businesses that said they, they're not able to pay because of COVID, they're looking for additional time? Has that come across or that just hasn't been in a conversation yet?
The handful of people that have reached out to me directly, it's been more questions about the bill and it hasn't been so much COVID related. And so, you know, it's, it's been typical stuff we deal with every year. Nathan Owen, if you're still here, do you want to speak to that? Have we been getting much feedback with your staff and finance related to COVID-related issues with the invoices?
I, from them, from my, from my staff, I haven't heard a whole lot of it being directly COVID-related. The main complaints are for the small penalty amounts or whatever may be on the bill. And then they also just mentioned the timing, which we all know is not great right now. So.
Okay, thank you.
And if we could not do this now, we would have not done it right now. I just want to be clear on that. This is not something we wanted to do right now. But the code requires that it start in April and it has to be done before the summer tax bills go out. So apologies to everybody who's upset about that. We wanted to be sensitive about the situation. But we also have to, have to go by what the code provides. So that's why we're doing this right now.
Nathan, I just want to kind of touch base on the pension issue real quick for the caller. Because, you know, myself being here almost five years or four and a half years, I kind of ran on watching that and trying to chip away at it. So to have union contracts, open up their contracts to renegotiate with the city is not a likely scenario. We, we, we got that done. We showed partnership with our, you know, with our law enforcement officers and our, you know, our fire department, which are two biggest unions. But putting budget surpluses, you know, 100% committed to the pension issue. If anybody looks at their retirement account, knows they have less money in there than they did before March. I mean, that's just common sense. So of course our number is not going to look very good now. And when we made these changes, I think that it was communicated to us from MERS and also Sidney Prue, when she was there, that, that we're not going to see a real true benefit until years down the line. Way after I'm gone, way after probably everybody sitting up here is going to be gone. So we're always vigilant on that. We're always physically responsible on that. And I just want the public to understand that it is on our radar and, you know, we've done everything pretty much we can do. Now we have to sit and wait. If revenues come in, you know, in the next couple of years, they come in strong, I'm sure this commission would be more than happy to support, put another chunk on it. But MERS has said, the only way you can get that liability up is if either you change your hires going forward to a DC, which we've done, or put lump sum payments, which we've done. So the drum is being beat every week or every two weeks, we have a meeting about the pension. I hope that people understand that we've done our part and now it's a wait and see. But I appreciate union leaders that, you know, in the city that have been willing to open up contracts because that usually doesn't happen. Because they understand that we're in this together. So I just want to make that clear that, you know, that we are all vigilant on this and we're doing everything we can to get that number up. So.
Mayor, I will turn it back to you for other items in case there's anything you or any of the commission would like to bring up tonight.
Mayor, I do have something.
Go ahead, Commissioner Watson.
It's since, I think it was late last summer, or maybe it was mid last summer, the idea of naming city assets has come to us numerous times. I have been working with a group of community members on a policy. I do have a policy in draft. It has been run past Nathan and Tamaris. I have a handful of questions or just points of thought from them. And I just wanted to bring it to my fellow commissioners and mayor's attention that in the next two weeks, I will, I'll distribute it or reach out to you to have a discussion about it with hopes that we can have this on the next pre-meeting for, for discussion. And in the hopes of moving something forward. Just because it's, it's something that the community has asked for, and I felt that it was important that we give it some attention. So I've given it attention and now it's at a point to bring, it's been slow moving and I accept responsibility on that. But, but we're almost to a point of bringing a finished product to the commission for discussion.
Thank you.
Mayor Heath, I also have an item.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to update the commission and the community on our charter amendment issue for filling the position that is on the commission. We have received our approval from the governor to have our election in August to fill that position. And so the steps going forward from there will be that sometime probably later this month or in June, there'll be a resolution before the commission asking you to approve a special election. It's not the same as if we did a special election and we had done it this month. It just is a step that has to be taken in order for this to go on the August ballot for the election that's already taking place for our state primary election on August 4th. And then the ballot language will go on there for amend the charter language with regard to how we fill positions on the commission or a mayoral position, assuming that that passes with the voters. Then once that is passed, then we will have to submit that. Robin will submit it to the Secretary of State as well as a final count goes to the county clerk. And then once that has happened, then the law will become effective. Those submissions have to take place within 30 days of the election. So we anticipate that if all goes well, then this law will be effective no later than the end of August. And so then in September, as the commission, you could begin to look at how you'd like to fill the seat that has been empty all year.
Thank you, Tamaris, for your work on that.
You're welcome.
I would like to have a discussion with the commission about the dog park because we haven't really been able to have a discussion. And I know that when our city administrator did ask us how we wanted to proceed, we were pretty evenly split on it. So I would just like to have an open discussion right now on why you think we proceed or don't proceed at this point with pursuing that in light of, you know, the current situation, even though that money is not coming out of our general fund. If anybody wants to take over.
Sure, I will. I just think it's, it's a perception thing. I understand that it is a oil trust investment and it's exactly what the oil trust was set aside for. I think that that won't be understood by, by many. And so like, it's just. I think that that won't be understood by many. And so like, it's just, it's just bad timing. I'd love to see it. I mean, I'd love to see us approve a bid tonight and to see it go in, understanding that that's, you know, from our special savings account. But but I just, my position is that there's a better time to start a project like that. And hopefully it's sometime in the summer or even in the fall. But but right now it just is bad timing.
I guess I'll go next. I was one that was supportive of moving forward with the project. I think the project was already budgeted. And I understand Commissioner Watson's concern about perception, but I think that if somebody challenged, like I sent the email back to you, Nathan, it's like, if somebody challenges me, and I'll explain to them, you know, hey, it's like this is not the oil, you know, revenue is not out of the general fund. This is one of those projects where the city owns oil wells. It's the city's money, which are the citizens' money. But it's not coming essentially from tax dollars per se. It's more of a quality of life fund. So I would not support it. I would not support it if it was coming out of the general fund. I think that would be my position of the timing factor, I think, because it's coming out of oil money. I think it's already budgeted. I think that, you know, that I was prepared to go forward with it. But again, it's one of those things where, you know, if we start it in the middle of summer, end of summer, whenever we get through this 100%, I'm fine with that too. But that's just my initial thought.
I would have to agree with Commissioner Halt. If the money were coming out of the general fund, I wouldn't be in favor of it at all. But because it's oil trust money, and this is something that we've talked about for quite a while, I didn't have any problem at all moving forward on this. And I think the time to act is now so that we can get materials ordered, get things moving on the project so that people can take advantage of it hopefully yet this year.
But I guess, I mean, one of my concerns is that do we want people congregating at that park? I mean, is it just another point of concern before we are really out of the woods on this matter?
That was going to be my statement too, is that optics in that at the time when we were talking about this a couple of weeks ago, contractors couldn't do work. And so the city should not be doing non-essential work either. And so that was my first point of saying, no, I don't think we should go through with this. Now that has lessened and I believe contractors are able to go back to work if I understand correctly. So that's one thing. But the whole social distancing and the lack of a grand opening. Do we want to have people down there congregating? Do we want to have people down there who aren't doing the social distancing? Can we really celebrate this? We've waited all these years. What's a couple more months or even another year? And I would, I do worry about people flocking to that area. I could be totally wrong on that, but I know I would like to use it as often as possible. And I would be concerned that there would just be too many people down there at one time. And then what?
Well, how about if you just move forward with the project? Even if you get the project built, you don't have to open it up right away. You're going to have a situation where people are going to just be congregating. And I think that people will adhere to the social distancing to some degree, but we have, we have the other parks open. You can't picnic in that type of thing, but the dog park is a situation where it would be very easy to stay six to eight feet away from people, I think.
I was going to say that I agree with Commissioner Watson, and I do. I also agree with Commissioner Roberts. I'm concerned, A, that, you know, the optics in several different areas, the whole idea that we're doing this with the pandemic still kind of in full force, although things are opening up. You know, I've got a problem with showing the people that we're going to go out and spend money to do this when so many people don't have money. And I understand that it's not money from the general fund and it's from the oil trust, but that's still the people's money. And I don't see that it makes sense to demonstrate to the public that we're going to do some things that they're not in a position to be able to do for themselves. So that's kind of where I'm at.
But you know what? I agree with what you're saying, Commissioner Gauss, as far as spending money at the time when a lot of other people don't have money. But at the same time, people who have a really tight budget right now, the dog park is something that you can do for free.
Well, I'll just say that, you know, I don't govern for optics. I don't govern for perception. I govern to make decisions. And I feel that it's not my responsibility to find out if I feel that somebody can't, that too many people are going to congregate. I think people have to have some kind of self, some social responsibility in themselves to make sure that they're going through the proper procedures that the state, you know, and the federal government is mandating as we get through. So again, I never sit up here and, you know, govern for optics. It's like, you know, I make decisions and again, I'm not one that's going to beat the table on this. I mean, if you want to postpone it, I mean, I'm good with that too. But I don't see the real reason of holding off when it's not directly coming out of the general fund. That's my only thing.
Well, and again, to Commissioner Roberts' point, you know, the social distancing and we can say, you know, we can talk all day about, you know, how people are taking responsibility, but in many cases they're not. And the issue of wearing a mask or not wearing a mask, you know, people are talking about the constitutional rights not to wear a mask. But in my opinion, they're being selfish because the mask isn't to protect them. It's to protect the people they're around and the people they encounter. So the people aren't taking the responsibility. And I think they need to.
I have been concerned. I was already thinking about this before it even was presented to us by our city administrator. And when he did, I immediately responded because I knew you right where I thought. And I know, I don't, it's not about governing, like you said, Alan, governing for perception, okay? Like, but unfortunately, 99% of the people in our city don't know where money is coming from for projects. And it's just, it is the way it looks and how it feels to them. And a lot of them are hurting, going to be hurting, especially later on. And and I would like to celebrate this dog park. Like, it's exciting that we're going to have something like this that, you know, it's just going to be an exciting time. And I'd like to have a big grand opening. I don't feel like it's off for this year. In my opinion, I just feel like it needs to wait a little bit. I just feel like the timing, like you had already said, Commissioner Halt, about timing. Maybe the timing's just a little, maybe we need to wait just in light of everything. And I am a little worried myself about the social distancing. And I do feel, Commissioner Strayer, that they will flock there. I think everybody's dying to get outside, first of all. The weather is finally becoming nice. And then they're going to have this place to go. And yes, you're outside, so you're not confined to a building where, you know, I know things can be spread easier, but I still feel like you're going to have a lot of contact down there. I think everybody's going. I do think people will be flocking there because I've noticed even in my own neighborhood, the minute the weather changes just a tad recently, neighborhood kids are starting to all try to be together and, you know, hang out. And they're not social distancing. I'm seeing it a lot recently. So I feel like that's definitely going to be a factor. But I would, but my, one of my big fears is like what Commissioner Roberts already said, I guess fear, but just something that I'd like to see, I'd like to see us celebrate the dog park. And how can we really do that in in the fashion or style maybe that we would really like to with these unprecedented times?
So why not move forward with the project, build the project? And then when everybody is more comfortable with social distancing, then you can have your grand opening, your celebration. If you don't do anything until everybody is more comfortable with social distancing, it may be next year before that park ever is opened up.
I hear that, Commissioner Strayer. So Nathan, Bert, if you could walk us through, at least me, so I understand the bidding process. So we're talking about this mainly because we have a bid. And that bid is going to expire when?
Yeah, so I reached out to commissioners last week because this was a project that we had talked about as a group and the commission had authorized to move forward on. And I didn't unilaterally decide not to do it. So I reached out for feedback from the commission and found a very, a very split commission on this topic. Just before COVID hit, we had put out a bid for the fencing that will be required at the dog park. And that bid came back. And that bid, I thought we had to make a decision by tonight, but actually, if we put it off another meeting, that bid would still be valid. And so that was really what was driving the discussion right now was do we want to accept the bid that we received? Or do we want to just let that bid go and rebid it at a time where everybody feels more comfortable moving forward? Technically, we could still act at the next meeting if there was a consensus to do that. I believe that construction industries are able to start working again on Thursday. Is that right, Greg? Can you give me a nod? So on Thursday, so there would be no violation in terms of the activity of putting the fence up. But what everybody mentioned here, pro and con, is all very valid. So yeah, that's what prompted it was we would typically be building it right now. The idea was to have it done this fiscal year because it was a this fiscal year project. But I will also say that we have not budgeted any other projects for next year for oil and gas money either. So it's really completely up to the commission if you wanted to make it a project for later in the summer, which would be in the next fiscal year. The money's there in the oil and gas trust. So but the driving reason right now was the bid.
Was the bid. So let's say we do decide to put it on our agenda for two weeks and we vote yes on it. Is there a time limit for when that contractor has to complete the project?
We would have to reach out to them and find out what their schedule's like. I don't know if the contractor will be on a serious backlog because of the last two months or where we would fall in necessarily. It's very possible. It may not happen immediately. But that's a good question. And we can reach out to the bidder and find out what the schedule would look like and I'll send you some options. That's a good question. We have not had that conversation with them up to this point.
Because they may not even get to us until July or August, right?
Possible, yeah.
I know it took me a year and a half to get someone to do my backyard fence. So.
Did they ever give a timeline? Did we ever, so we didn't even have a timeline then, Nathan, ever on how long the project would even take once started?
Well, our goal was to have it done by the end of June, this fiscal year. We had budgeted it for a project completed in June. Whether or not the contract could have it done in June, I don't know. But if we authorized it yet this fiscal year, it would be identified as a 1920 expense, not a 2021 expense. But I can reach out to the bidder and find out what the schedule could look like if we were to move forward. But again, there would not need to be a decision made on that particular bid until the 18th of May. But then if we opt not to do it at that point, we would rebid, which is fine. That's okay. There's no, there's no issues with that. But we just have to figure out at what point we're comfortable starting the process over again.
This discussion tonight has, it's impacted my position on this. I think that it would be all right to proceed with this right now. And I think a simple solution would be to make sure that, two things, one, that it's very obvious on the actual park. This is made possible by the oil trust fund that's approved by the voters, as well as whatever communication goes out through media, it can help us on that one too, related to, you know, this is related to, you know, oil trust funds that the voters approved for this year. And this is our inaugural project. So people are used to projects right now. So I think some communication and signage would be very valuable in this situation because, you know, if we talk about worst case scenario and we have to make some staffing cuts, I would hate for a staff member to think that we picked a dog park over their compensation.
And I would like to see some kind of nice opening. And we can do that at some point. But to Lad's point is, we don't have to open it right away. We don't have to police it. But if there are issues, is it something where we could just say, like the skate park, you know, there have been many a time where we've closed that skate park because of vandalism. So how would that look if we do build it and maybe there are issues with it? What if we, you know, close it for a two week period and just say, you know, we don't get to use it until we know the rules or until, you know, the COVID-19 stuff is a little bit less. So it's just a thought too.
Just piggybacking on Commissioner Watson's comment about the signage, about where it comes, I think that's a great idea. I think it shows kind of what that, those pumps out there north of town was providing to the city. And kind of as we go forward, I'd say we don't have to have a big ribbon cutting at first, but I think that having it built and ready to go, and once we're out of this, it'll give people some, you know, just something positive about to get outside, take the dogs out and practice safe measures also. But I think it gives people, you know, because people are bummed. They're sitting in their house and they're starting to get a little more, you know, because of the weather. But I think it'd be something for the public to look forward to because I tell you, I hear about it all the time before we start talking about that this is one one of the main things the public would want. And, you know, and that's a dog park, right? The signage, I think that's, even if we weren't talking about where the money was coming from, I think that's still a great idea because it kind of rubber stamps on what those oil and gas revenues, the first project we've done on it, and here's what we get. So good idea.
I feel like I'm changing after, this is why I wanted to have this discussion. And I asked Nathan, like I, especially when I heard that it was very split, I wanted to have this pre-meeting discussion on the dog park for this reason, because I wanted to hear where everyone was coming from. And it's a little hard for us all to get together in a meeting, obviously, now with the way everything is. So I really felt like it was very important that we have this pre-meeting and have this discussion. And a lot of times when you hear somebody else's viewpoint, you're like, oh, I didn't think about it that way or whatnot. And I will say that I am leaning more towards, let's get it started. We don't even know how long it'll take anyways. I wasn't, you know, that was one of my questions, like, how long was it going to take to actually, you know, once we got the bid and, you know, started, like, what was our timeframe? And it could be a while, especially because they haven't been able to do anything for a while and they might be backed up. So we might not even have to worry about this by the time it's all said and done. And we might be celebrating with a still big grand opening by the time it's done because we might be kind of through a lot of this, you know, pandemic. So, you know, we don't know. We don't have a crystal ball. We can't tell what's going to happen. But I mean, it is, I agree, Commissioner Halt, it would be really nice to have something to celebrate. And, you know, a happy thing to celebrate right now because there hasn't been a lot of celebration recently.
If it's okay with the commission, I can reach out. Matt and I can work with the contractor who gave us the bid. We can get some more information and I'll pass that along. And then we've got a couple of weeks before the next meeting. And so whatever the, you know, however the census at that time, we can put on the agenda. And if it passes, it passes. If it fails, it fails. But I'll pass along any additional information I get in terms of what scheduling could look like. Thank you for the feedback on that tonight.
Thank you.
Is there anything else that, other items that need to be discussed before I open it up for public comment? Okay, I will open it up for any public comment.
Kento Cars, 110 Locust, listening today to hear you guys talk about pension. It sounds like the only thing that you guys can do is open up collective bargaining agreements. I mean, I think that might be one of 10 things. And that would be number 10 on the list. You know, so you went back to employees, which is, that's great. But look at what you yourselves can do. You know, we spent half a million dollars on a water line. That money could have went towards a pension deficit. We installed streetlights. We had cast iron streetlights that could be painted. And someone wanted downtown to look like Royal Oak, so they got these fancy ones that rusted five years later. So I think there's things that you guys can do. I mean, we've got a economic development director. I mean, look at some of the things and fiascos that went on there. Schott Burger, we did not have the liquor license. You've got the market. You opened up the Saturday market. You've got the, the market. You opened up the Saturday market and everybody left. So maybe we should start looking at some other things besides collective bargaining agreements. You look at the oil trust and you talked about the people, you know, why can't the people say, why don't you ask the people? Maybe the people say, spend the oil money on the pension deficit. Spend the fee money on the pension deficit. I think you guys have a long way to go and just go after collective bargaining agreements. It's only a small step. Thank you.
Does not sound like there's any more public comments. So I am, can I have, may I have a motion to adjourn our pre-meeting and we will begin our regular agenda in five minutes? May I have a motion?
Move to adjourn the meeting.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
See you in five minutes. Thank you.
Clear.
Are you clear? Yes.
Everyone ready?
Yep. Go ahead.
Hello, everyone. I'm City Administrator Nathan Byrd. It is seven o'clock and I'd like to address just a couple of things before Mayor Heath officially calls us to order. Governor Whitmer has extended the executive order on virtual meetings until May 12th. So tonight's meeting is again being held virtually. For much of the meeting, we asked that participants other than commissioners and staff members, please remain muted if you can to allow the commission to have their discussions and conduct their business. Opportunities for public comment will be offered at different times throughout the meeting, including of course during tonight's public hearings. And at those times, participants will be unmuted and an opportunity to address the commission will be provided. The three minute public comment rule does still remain in effect for the period at the end of the meeting for comments. And when it is time for public comment, if you could, please identify your name and address for the record prior to making your comments. Once we formally start the meeting, the format and structure will be the exact same as what it is in person. And we will work through our agenda items as usual. All commission rules and procedures do remain in effect. Anyone who would like to see our agenda can find it on our website, adrianecity.com. And there is closed captioning available. You should be able to click that at the bottom of the screen if anybody needs to access that. Thank you all for participating tonight. And Mayor Heath, I will turn it over to you.
I call to order the May 4th, 2020 meeting of the Adrian City Commission. Everyone, please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Hou.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Watson.
Present.
Commissioner Strayer.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
All commission members present.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 20th, 2020 regular meeting of the Adrian City Commission?
Move to approve the minutes.
I have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Minutes approved by unanimous vote.
May I have a motion to pay the vouchers as presented?
Move to pay the vouchers as presented.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Hou. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Vouchers approved by unanimous vote.
We'll now move to the regular agenda, special orders. Last month, notices of delinquent invoices were sent to residents. This is an annual process that occurs each April and is required by city code. Tonight's public hearings provide an opportunity for anyone aggrieved by their assessment to be heard in accordance with Code Section 70-14. Upon conclusion of the public hearings, hearings, city staff will investigate each appeal and a final roll will be presented to the commission at our next meeting. As you speak, please provide your name, address, and your property ID number. The property ID number can be found near the bottom of the notice you received. If you do not have your property ID number, please still provide your name and address for the record before making your statement. And I just want to also say before we begin that we're going to take some time in between just to make sure that everybody is heard. There's a little bit of a lag doing it over the internet via Zoom. And so if a couple of you speak out at the same time, just, you know, try to work it out and we'll, we'll go, we'll get through this one by one, doing this via Zoom. We know this is not the best of circumstances to be doing this. And we do apologize, but under the, under the order, this is how we are going to have to do it. So I now open this hearing for public comment.
Hey, Mayor, this is Nathan. If, if you wouldn't mind reading as.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It's just, just that there are going to be two hearings. The first is
You're right.
This is, and the second will be specific to water and sewer charges. And so if you could read those, then I think people will know which one is theirs.
All right. Sorry about that. So this is special order one. It's a public hearing to hear and consider comments on the special assessment role for delinquent invoices, including a 10% penalty for late payment.
Yeah, hello. My name is Chad Sharp. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Yeah, I had a grievance on, uh, my name is Chad Sharp. I'm 833 East Michigan Street. My assessment is on the property of 827 East Michigan Street for a total of $1,116. The issue that I had is we had worked to get that property taken and gotten to the point where it was almost settled back around 2016. And the prior administrator had left office and apparently had dropped cases of this similar to these. And I had to start the process all over again, so another two years on top of that to get that house torn down. So I, I don't feel that the weed mowing and the garbage pickup is warranted because the place hadn't been, nobody there for almost four years. With tearing, when the house finally did get torn out, of course, on the property and what is the problem, the house did get torn down and there was a, it wasn't, the demo wasn't completed properly. They had filled the, the fill-in with gravel and then in turn had destroyed probably half of the other adjacent lodge, which I own also, which is pretty much all gravel now too. So there's also the damages and the fact that these fees. That's all.
I'm going to give a few more moments for anyone else for delinquent invoices. Since I am not getting any more public comments, I now close this public hearing. We're going to move on to special order dash two, public hearing to hear and consider comments on the special assessment role for delinquent water and sewer charges, including a 10% penalty for late payment. I now open this hearing for public comment. I am not hearing any public comment. So I now close this public hearing. We're going to move on to resolutions. Res, we're going to go to R20-073 is from finance. It is a resolution to adopt the proposed fiscal year 2020-21 budget and general appropriations act. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
I have a motion from Commissioner, oh, sorry. Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments?
Again, I'll just echo what I said in, in the, in the pre-meeting. It's a tough time and, and I think this is a very prudent way to proceed with our, our 2021 budget. I commend all the staff that put in the hours and the time to prepare this. And, and I, I'm here to, to work through this because this is going to be a very active budget. My gut tells me as we proceed through the, the next fiscal year. So thank you to the staff and this one's going to be a lively one.
Mayor Heath.
I, somebody, Commissioner Hou, did you say something?
Yeah, I'll be quick. I think, you know, over the course of the year, we do a lot of budget amendments. I think this fiscal year is going to be way more than normal, I think. We're just a load of revenues coming in from the state essentially more so than, than our property tax, you know, come to commercial residential. But understanding like, you know, how, you know, how I, I'm, I approach this in my own businesses that it's unknown. You don't, you know, you do not know what revenue is going to come in. That's all you can do is make educated projections. With that being said, as we go forward through this fiscal year, I think that it's our job as commissioners working alongside the city administrative staff to make sure we're vigilant on those funds coming in and making the appropriate decisions as we see revenues decline, if that is the case. So again, I'm, I'm very confident that, that these decisions will be made if need be. Knowing that all cities are dealing with this, all businesses are dealing with this, but just to be vigilant of the money coming in and, and, and making decisions as we see fit. Because I do not support just dumping more money from our fund balance in to make up deficits. So hopefully this year, hopefully it's a lot less of an impact than projecting. But I think preparing for the worst and hoping for the best is the best way to go in this situation.
Mayor, Mayor, I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, Commissioner Gauss.
I made some fairly harsh comments two weeks ago at our meeting about expectations and maybe not lack of expectations. Since that time, I've had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Byrd and several commissioners. And while we still don't know what to expect from the current economic conditions, I was pleased that staff had made some proactive expenditure cuts. I'm happy to hear that. And we know that we're going to have to make budget amendments as the year goes on. That being said, I'm comfortable with the proposed finance, financial plan and you'll have my support this evening.
Just a reminder too, if you are not a commissioner, if you can, please try to keep your, keep it on mute because we're getting a lot of feedback. Thank you. All right, we're going to move ahead. So we have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote. Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R20-074 is from Finance. It is a resolution to approve fiscal year 2019-20 third quarter budget amendments. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hell.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R20-075 is for transportation. It is a resolution approving a project authorization for federal operating assistance for the Adrian Dollar Ride and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said project authorization. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Hell. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hell.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R20-076 is from the city clerk. It is a resolution to approve a commercial marijuana facilities permit application, for a dual-purpose permit for A E Y Capital LLC DBA Gage Cannabis Company. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments?
Mayor, I have one briefly.
Yes, Commissioner Watson, go ahead.
Attorney Henigan, this, I believe we've had issues or just misunderstandings with this organization through time. I just want to verify before voting. They are, they are, they have, we have rectified those differences and they've been good citizens since.
You're on mute.
Got it. Thank you. Commissioner Watson, I'm very happy to report to all the commission that after the hearing that we had with Gage a few months ago, they've taken a lot of actions to be proactive, to make sure that they don't have any additional issues. They reach out with any questions that they have with regards to signage or advertising. They reach out to myself or to Greg's department. They even send out proofs of the things that they plan to put up with specific language so that they can be sure that they're on point with everything. They reached out about the MRA bulletin that allowed curbside delivery or curbside pickup or delivery to make sure that they would be in compliance on all of those issues as well. And they have about three people on their team that have been in constant communication with the city to make sure that they're going to be good corporate citizens. And we've had no additional issues with them whatsoever.
Good to hear. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hell.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts. Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R20-077 is from Administration. It is a resolution to confirm the appointment of Nathan Owen as the Finance Director for the City of Adrian. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments?
Madam Mayor and City Commissioners, Don Taylor, 475 Meadowbrook Drive. I've had on many occasions the opportunity to work with Nathan through various organizations that I'm involved with. And I wholeheartedly support this endorsement for him become the new city Finance Director. Did I say?
Ken Tokarz, 110 Locust. This is more a procedural question. Mr. Owen was with the city for four years and Mr. Francore, well, Peter Francore was chosen over him. Mr. Francore, I think he was forced to resign from his last position. He worked six months in Loveland, Ohio. He worked, I didn't think he lasted a year in his last position. And I brought all these to the attention of, uh, Mr. Byrd and I think Commissioner Watson. And you guys still hired him. And then now you made Mr. Owen the interim, which I agree with the interim, but what all of a sudden changed that you didn't even consider Mr. Owen initially? You hired a guy who's now delivering mail? And then why now all of a sudden is he ready to tackle a $33 million budget?
Before we begin, the commissioner comments, I had a comment myself about Nathan. I will, I was only in there a little while in the office once he took over interim because of social distancing and deemed not essential to be in City Hall. But I, I just want to confirm that to, to everyone that his work ethic, Nathan was always one of the last ones every time I was walking out of there. One of the first ones when I was coming in for early hours. He was really trying to tackle all parts of the job and working crazy hours and having to tackle cutting a budget quite a bit very quickly and trying to learn all those ropes in a very short amount of time under a lot of pressure and stress. And he has handled that very well and just shown to be very committed to the city and doing what is best and in our best interest for the city. So I just wanted to give my recommendation. Any other commissioner comments?
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Commissioner Hell.
Yeah, I had the pleasure of working with Nathan. Before he worked in the city, he actually kept my books for a short period of time before he moved over to City Hall. And I always found Nathan to be very on point, on top of things, communicative. And I'm just really happy for him. Great guy. You know, and, and I think, you know, just kind of being crammed in this job and having to learn so quickly to be the chief of that department, I think it's a lot of stress and pressure. It would be a lot of stress and pressure on anybody. Again, you know, as a person, you know, I think he's more than qualified and I'm just overall happy for him. So that's all I have to say about it. I support it.
I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hell.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Now it is public comment time. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit. And for the record, please state your name and address.
Mayor and Commissioners, Don Taylor, 475 Meadowbrook Drive. I just want to thank you for approving Nathan, a very competent individual, so committed to our community. And that's so very important to us at this time in our history. So thank you.
I'm not getting any other public comments, so I'm going to move on. Are there any commissioner comments?
I'd like to just make one, and that is to say congratulations to Nathan Owen. And I hope that you hold that position for many years.
I would like to offer my congratulations and like to see if you could outlast Cindy.
Mayor, I have a comment or two.
Commissioner Watson.
In reply to, I believe it was Mr. Tokarz's comment, since I was named on the as, as most people know, interviews are confidential. So I will not discuss interviews, but certain things can't be said or proven in an interview. And, and I think that's obvious that Mr. Owen has done in the short term. And from the communication I've received, has performed his role very impressively. And for that, congratulations to Nathan on that. In addition, part of our role in leadership is to make sure that we are good employers. And over the last six weeks, I think it is, or however long this COVID has become very real for us in Adrian and Southeast Michigan. I've touched base with some of the leadership around the city. And as, as all of us are, there's concern, concern for everybody's safety, concern for everybody's well-being and health. And, and each time I touch base with leadership, all of them have an unwavering dedication to the city and providing service to our, our residents. Whether police, fire, parks, are the three that I have some of the strongest relationships with on the individual side. All of them express concern, worry, but all of them always close with a comment of dedication to the city and the residents in their roles. For that, I say thank you to our staff. I say thank you to our staff in City Hall as well as out in the community. I appreciate more than I can express the hard work that everybody is putting in. And I, I can't say thank you enough.
All right. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.